Good evening. I'd like to call this Thursday, February 8th, meeting of the Tacoma School District Board of Directors to order. Please rise and join me for a flag salute.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic which stands one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Would the General Counsel please call the roll?
President Cobb.
Here.
Vice President Biall.
Here.
Director Winskill?
Here.
And Director Heinz.
Here.
Item five, recognition of staff, students, and community. Five point one, recognition of Purchasing Department for Achievement of Excellence in Procurement Award.
Thank you, President Cobb and members of the board. The National Procurement Institute annually awards agencies that meet certain criteria its Achievement of Excellence in Procurement Award. This award recognizes organizational excellence, innovation, professionalism, e-procurement, productivity, and leadership attributes of the procurement function. Eight organizations across North America come together to select the honorees. Tacoma Public Schools earned a 2017 Achievement of Excellence in Procurement Award, making it the eighth consecutive year our district's purchasing team has won this honor. The district is only one of three agencies in Washington and one of twenty-three school districts in the United States and Canada to receive the award. Over the years, the innovations and the efficiencies that our purchasing team has put in place have resulted in millions of dollars in savings for the district that's freed up more resources that can go to the classroom. This kind of sustained excellence doesn't happen by chance. It comes from a commitment to the core values that you put in the district's strategic plan, that results matter, flexible continuous improvement, and data-driven decision-making. So please join me in honoring our purchasing team led by Director Steve Demille.
Thank you very much. We like to compete for this award because we believe that you need to keep challenging yourself. So, like teachers getting certified, we keep striving for this award and we've made continuous improvement. Then Dan mentioned e-procurement as part of the criteria. We're the only school district in the state that is now one hundred percent e. All of our bids, quotes, purchases, contracts, everything is now done electronic. We've even added electronic evaluations, as Chris can tell you, he's had to do several here in the last few months. So, thank you very much. On behalf of a great team, we're proud to get this award once again.
And once again, we just want to thank our procurement team. That's amazing work. And the fact that we're a hundred percent e-procurement and the only district in the state of the two-hundred-and-ninety-five, that's a huge accomplishment. So, thank you. Item five point two, recognition of the district's newest National Board Certified Teachers. And I'm guessing there's some counselors and others in that mix too, our NBCTs overall.
Good evening, members of the board. Tonight I am honored to present to you some teachers who have worked very, very hard. This evening, we are extending a special welcome to this year's National Board Certified Teachers and those who have successfully renewed their National Board Certification after ten years of continuing to hold their practice to the highest standards set by the nation. The National Board for Professional Teaching Standards reports that Washington State has a higher number of newly certificated certified teachers than any other state. Washington State ranks third in the country overall. And right here in our very own district, we have one of the largest numbers of new NBCTs that Tacoma has ever had. Forty-three have just finished this rigorous process of becoming nationally board certified, and thirteen of our teachers have renewed their certification. These are teachers who have voluntarily spent two-hundred hours or more with a process that involves intensive writing, videotape analysis, evidence collection, and deep reflection on their practice. Their submitted portfolio is evaluated by multiple assessors across the state during a time when candidates keep their fingers crossed that they become certified. While this is a noteworthy achievement for teachers, it's an even bigger gift to the students of Tacoma. High-quality instruction is what Tacoma students need, and high-quality teachers ensure Tacoma students get the education they deserve. The support to our teachers is very important throughout this process. Coming alongside the candidates as they work through the rigorous process are the National Board Cohort Facilitators. Please stand to be recognized for your dedication. Rosalie Sasser, Michelle Tyson, and Sadie Allen. Stephanie Shepherd was unable to join us tonight. An endeavor like this also requires someone at the district level to help orchestrate this program. We are truly fortunate to have Lynn Olson and the Curriculum Instruction Department leading the charge. I will begin tonight by recognizing the teachers who have received National Board Certification this year and also who are able to attend tonight's board meeting. You'll recall that in The Innovator, on January twenty-fifth, we actually listed all of the names of the teachers. So, these are the folks who are able to carve out a little time to join us tonight. And I'm going to read their names, and if by chance I miss someone because the RSVP didn't quite make it to me, we want to say your name too, so I'll ask you to stand as well. So, teachers, as I call your name, I'd like you to come up and just form a line right here. And we would love to have the board congratulate you as well. So, here we go. These are the teachers who have completed this rigorous process. Amanda Kirkland. Amanda Seystra. Andrew Carlson. Angela Evans. Annalisa Nobles. Brianna Wells. Caroline Menenza, Menzia, sorry. Christine Snellgrove. Carla Esperanza Stewart. Emily Harasimowicz. Emily Smith. Jessica Van Cleff. Karen Jaskar. Kiana Weinshank. Kristen Hunter. Meredith Williams. Ravi Jaskar. Rebecca Foster. Shannon Simzak. Shanice Madison, Sharice Madison. Terri Harris. Tristan Allen. Elizabeth Meyer. Erin Bethel. Kizzy Davis. Tanya Ronhavda. Lynn Tiedemann. Catherine Kirivakal. Anne Hansen. Jennifer Vandever. Joelle Perkins. Did I miss anyone? Micah. We have in the back, I want to make sure I have his name, say his last name quickly, Micah Haven. Anyone else? Yes. Lauren Noble. And one more, where else am I? Two more. Megan Gibson and Heidi Barabee. And Ruth Shavix. Look at that line. Wow. If you added together all of the hours that those teachers have put in, we wouldn't even be able to comprehend it. Teachers, we are so, so impressed and so proud of you. Would you please come right up around, and the board would love to shake your hand and congratulate you.
Congratulations.
Congratulations.
What's every ten years, right?
Congratulations.
Every five.
Congratulations.
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 Standing at the back door are our cohort facilitators, and they're going to award pins to our teachers.
That was so much fun.
You're welcome. That was awesome.
I don't want to hear that.
Thank you.
Congratulations.
Yeah.
Congratulations.
Congratulations.
Hi.
Congratulations.
Hey.
Congratulations.
What's going on?
Congratulations.
Oh, yeah.
Congratulations.
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 Right.
Congratulations.
You have a Christmas.
Yes.
You too?
Oh, he and I used to ride a bus.
Hi.
Does he?
Oh.
Oh, true, but true.
Oh, that's awesome.
The Bernie fans.
Congratulations.
Thank you.
Hi, congratulations.
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 Thank you.
You know that. I did. I came near me. Congratulations.
All right, we are not quite finished. We are not quite finished. Next, we would like to recognize our teachers who have completed the renewal of their certification. They're excited. It's hard to calm them down. We'd like to recognize the next, the teachers who have completed the renewal of their certification after ten years of holding their practice up to high standards. So, would you please come forward when you hear your name? Dawn Baughman. Heidi Barabee. Megan Gibson. Susan Gregory. Come forward. Oh, well, then I guess you have to come again. Did I miss anyone else for renewal?
Erin Bethel.
Erin Bethel, renewal. So, these are our candidates who have renewed after ten years. So, thank you and congratulations. They get two handshakes. It's okay. Yeah, yeah, I know. Ten years again. You're already done. We have a reception for them across in the boardroom where they're going to be eating cake and receiving a couple more recognitions. So, thank you so much.
Well, once again, we just want to congratulate you all and thank you for all the hard work that you put into that process and really does benefit our students. So, we're going to move on to item number six, members of the public wishing to address the board. School board members encourage public participation. Your input is appreciated. If you would like to address the school board, please follow these steps. First, complete a citizens' request to speak card, which is located at the back of the auditorium. Submit the card to the school board secretary prior to the start of the meeting. Cards submitted after the public comment period has ended will not be considered at this session. The superintendent or deputy superintendent will call your name when it's your turn to address the school board. Please speak into the microphone. You will have up to three minutes to share your comments.
First tonight, and forgive me if I mispronounce your name, is Anid Yerena, speaking on school board members from the central neighborhood.
Hi, members of the board and Madam President. My name is Anaid Yerena, and I'm here to speak, as you mentioned, about the composition of the board. And I'd like to start by quoting some data from your website. So, according to the most recent enrollment report posted on your site, twenty percent of the students of Tacoma School District are Hispanic. As a member of the Hispanic community and a core member of Latinx Unidos of the South Sound, which is a loose organization, I am here to encourage you to take this fact into consideration in your decision for the new member of this important board. I hope you agree that each member of the board contributes uniquely and gives voice to the needs of the many members of our community. Having a Hispanic board member would greatly add to the diversity of perspectives and valuable qualities that this distinguished board already has. Thank you for your time and for considering this request.
Thank you. Next, this evening, speaking on the Next Move internship program, Ms. Emily Spencer from Mount Tacoma.
Hi, board meeting. I'm Emily Spencer. I'm from Mount Tacoma. I'm a senior high school, and I am currently enrolled in the Next Move internship. And I just wanted to thank you guys for supporting such a program because it's really impacted my life in so many ways. I want to pursue a career in neonatal nursing, so I got an internship in the Tacoma General Hospital. And it's just really been amazing and a great experience because I personally think that, like, or I've always thought that I wanted to work with newborn babies. I just didn't know how, and I just thought that nursing was the way to go. So, by getting this internship, by all of the help of the Next Move people who've always helped me, I've realized that you don't necessarily have to be a nurse to be working with newborn babies. I got to talk to CNNs and nurses assistants that get to also work with newborn babies, and it's just really eye-opening. For a high school student, it's really hard to go out there and know how to dress appropriately for an interview and how to speak correctly, say the right things, because you really don't know at that point in your life. And the Next Move internship program has really helped me get to where I am now. They taught me all the steps I needed to know. They just helped me in so many ways that I couldn't have done on my own. And I just wish that the Next Move internship, that mostly everyone knows about it, because not a lot of people know. And I'm just really thankful and grateful that I had this opportunity to learn about the career that I want to pursue in, because whether I go to college or I go into the workforce, it's experience that I get to put on. Thank you.
You have another minute, right?
Oh, I thought that was the buzzer. Sorry. And it's just, it's just really great to just know what it feels like to go into that position. Whether I like it or not, I still get to know what it's, what it's like, what I get to, what I get to, sorry, experience. And I just, I'm really thankful. Thank you, you guys, for having this opportunity for me and many people who have benefited from multiple high schools. That, so, thank you.
Thank you. That is all our speakers tonight, Madam President.
Thank you. So, moving on to item number seven. So, seven is the superintendent's report?
The superintendent is in traffic on her way, and she is going to speak and give you an update on some of her learnings as she's toured schools. So, I would ask if we could delay that one to the next meeting if possible.
Okay, we'll delay that update until our next meeting. So, moving on to item number eight, the consent agenda. Is there a motion to adopt the consent agenda?
I move adoption.
It's been moved and seconded to adopt the consent agenda. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion is adopted. Item number nine, policy matters, and tonight there are no policy matters. Item number ten, quarterly financial update. Presentations on the financial health of the district will be made during regular board meetings on a quarterly basis. Monthly financial statements can be found on the district website at tacomschools.org and then to About MN Finance. Item number eleven, curriculum instruction. There are no curriculum instruction matters tonight. Item number twelve, business matters. Twelve point one, approval of grant proposal entitled "The Thrive Innovative School Model: Active Minds" to the America's Promise Alliance Healthy Schools Fund.
Move approval.
Second.
Did you want me to read it to you or?
Yeah, go ahead.
Okay. The Assistant Superintendent for K-12 Support recommends that the Board of Directors approve submission of the Thrive Innovative School Model Grant Proposal to the America's Promise Alliance requesting up to three-hundred thousand dollars. And if awarded, approve expenditure of funds according to accepted guidelines. Funding source, American, America's Promise Alliance.
It's been moved and seconded. Are there any questions or comments? All those in favor of adopting the motion signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion is adopted. Item twelve point two, approval of resolution number two-zero-three-seven. Request for Tacoma School District Number Ten, one-hundred-and-eighty-day waiver for grades K through twelve.
Before I read this to you, I just wanted to give you a little background information on this. This is a renewal application for the four, we call them day-to-days that we've had the last three years where our staff is getting professional development around the analysis of data. They work together in PLCs, and they basically use that data to change their practice and the activities they have planned for students. And so, they do that on the waiver days, and we think it's very beneficial, and we'd like to continue that. And so, we're asking the State Board of Education to renew for another three years of four waiver days that will allow us to do that work again. So, that's what this is all about. So, the Assistant Superintendent of K-12 Support recommends that the Board of Directors approve the request for Tacoma School District Number Ten, one-hundred-and-eighty-day waiver for two-thousand eighteen nineteen, two-thousand nineteen twenty, and twenty twenty twenty-one.
I move approval. Second.
Any comments or questions?
I just have a quick question.
Director Biall?
It won't take very long. Assistant Superintendent Pace, does this have a specific list of schools? Or is it just at our discretion?
This is, these are all of our schools. You mean in our district?
Oh, these apply to all the schools. Okay.
Yes, absolutely.
Because what I was thinking is, I was in a tour on the IB schools, and they were talking about liking to at some point probably have a schedule similar to some of the other innovative schools.
Sure.
So, that would fall under this if they so ask for that.
If they, if they have something different than a hundred-and-eighty days that requires them to go to the State Board of Education and ask for a waiver.
Okay.
Like Sota and Sammy.
That's what they were asking me, and I said, "I don't know, but I will ask."
Yeah.
Okay, great. Thank you.
You're welcome.
Director Heinz?
Thank you. What sort of feedback have we gotten from the teachers about data days and the use of that time?
They support it. I know our teachers' union strongly recommends this. I mean, they supported this and are part of the process that we have to go through to get the waivers, to get their support. So, they do support it. I believe our, you know, generally speaking, our teachers are in favor of the extra time because it allows them to work together and to look at data and to, you know, be able to go into the classroom with a plan based on solid data. So, we haven't gotten any pushback, or, you know, it's a regular school day for them, so they, they get to come in and work together during that time.
Okay, thank you.
Any other comments or questions? All those in favor of adopting the motion signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion is adopted. Item thirteen, other business. Thirteen point one, approval of annual continuous school improvement plans for the seventeen eighteen school year.
And before I read this one, I just wanted to remind you that every year you approve the school improvement plans, or the SIPs, what we call them, for every school. And currently, we have, there's a couple exceptions, but every school has their SIP plan up on their website, which is, should be easily accessible by our public. We have a couple with technical difficulties. I know Grant Elementary is one of those that we're in the process of getting that up. But there's a couple others as well, but generally, all of our schools have their SIP plans in place and ready for the public to view them. They are ever-changing documents, so as we work on our data days and work on the data that we have, sometimes the SIP plans will change to meet the different challenges and needs of the school as they progress through the school year. So, with that, I'll read this to you. The Assistant Superintendent of K-12 Support recommends that the Board of Directors approve the annual renewal of the Continuous School Improvement Plan for the two-thousand seventeen eighteen school year.
I move approval. Second.
Any questions or comments? All those in favor of adopting item thirteen point one signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion is adopted. Item thirteen point two, approval to negotiate an award contract for construction management services.
Chief Operating Officer recommends that the Board of Directors approve the superintendent to negotiate and award contracts for securing the construction management services with the top three firms as indicated.
I move approval. Second.
Any questions or comments from the board? Director Heinz?
Yeah, thank you. I saw the funding source listed as the capital bond, but I didn't see an amount or a length of time.
Right, so.
Can you elaborate, please?
So, typically, we negotiate with all three vendors. They give us billable rates. We haven't come to the conclusion of that to give you an accurate dollar amount yet. So, we should have that information within the next, you know, one to two weeks, once we finalize those negotiations.
So, what are we approving this evening? The ability for you to negotiate and then come back to us with the actual cost, and then we'll be able to assess that actual cost at that time?
Correct.
Okay, thank you.
Any other questions or comments? All those in favor of adopting item number thirteen point two, approval to negotiate an award contract for construction management services signify by saying aye.
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 Any opposed? Motion is approved. Item thirteen point three, approval to negotiate an award GCCM contract with Turner Construction Company to provide alternative method of construction for Burney Elementary School.
The Chief Operating Officer recommends that the Board of Directors approve the superintendent to negotiate an award contract to Turner Construction Company for the GCCM alternative method for New Burney Elementary School.
I move approval. Second.
Any questions or comments from the board? I just have one clarifying comment. I've seen GCCM many times. I don't always remember seeing alternative with that. Is there anything different, or can you explain what GCCM alternative method is?
So, there's nothing different than what you've seen apparent in the past. It's just the delivery method. You have GCCM, you have design build, or you have low bid. So, there's nothing different than what you've seen in the past.
Okay, thank you. And for the purpose of this motion and this vote, Director Biall?
No, it's the next one.
Oh, sorry.
I have to, is it just Grant is, no, it's for the, for the Grant one, not this one.
Okay, sorry.
I'll explain why, I think.
All those in favor of adopting item thirteen point three signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? So, item thirteen point three is adopted. Item.
Go ahead.
Thirteen point four, approval to negotiate an award GCCM contract with Corusmo Construction to provide an alternative method of construction for Grant Elementary School.
Madam President, I'm going to recuse myself on this because one of my relatives is one of the senior construction superintendents for Corusmo Construction, so I'm going to leave the room and then I'll come back. Thank you.
Is there a, is there a motion to adopt item thirteen point?
I'm going to read it.
I'm sorry. I'm going ahead now.
I know we are.
The Chief Operating Officer recommends that the Board of Directors approve the superintendent to negotiate an award contract to Corusmo Construction for the GCCM alternative method for the new Grant Elementary School.
I move approval. Second.
It's been moved and seconded. Are there any questions or comments about the motion? Director Heinz?
I did have a question. My recollection is that because of our knowledge and use of GCCM, OSPI had granted us the liberty to use that. Is that correct?
Right, we have a, I believe, a three-year timeframe in which we don't have to go back to the PRC to award the GCCM delivery method internally, so.
So, it's another tool that we have in our toolbox. We don't always use that method, but we have that available, and we've cut through some of the red tape by having that approval by OSPI. I also remember we were working on some sort of a rubric or a checklist. Is that still in development?
Can you clarify? I'm not sure. Can you clarify? I'm not sure.
Well, and, and in fairness, I believe it predated you, but the idea was how, what sort of data do we use to identify that GCCM may be a viable option when we use it and when we don't use it?
So, obviously there's three delivery methods. Uh, the delivery method in which our team feels more comfortable with are two, GCCM and design build. We, we, we definitely don't, uh, feel comfortable using the low bid environment because it's based on price. You get what you get, at least with the GCCM design build, we have an opportunity to evaluate each company that, uh, submits a proposal and award according to that. So these are the delivery methods in which we feel more comfortable. Obviously, uh, with our CM services, we're going, each vendor's going to bring in new construction management systems in which we're gonna build on to actually manage our projects m- moving forward.
Okay, thank you.
Any other comments? All those in favor of adopting item 13.4 signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? The motion is approved. We'll pause for a minute to let Director Yell get back to the dais. Moving on to item 13.5, approval of school board candidates to interview for appointment to vacant position.
The General Council recommends that the Board of Directors select candidates to be interviewed in an open public meeting, which will be held on Thursday, February 15th, 2018, from 3 o'clock to 6 o'clock PM at the Central Administration Building. The Board is operating under Policy 1114, Board Member Resignation and Vacancy, which was triggered when former President Ushka tendered her resignation because of her election to, uh, the Tacoma City Council. An application to be considered for the vacant board seat was made public December 15th, 2017, and we extended the deadline to submit applications to January 16th, 2018. We received 22 applications and the applications required peo- individuals to complete an application form, to submit a cover letter, and a resume. In executive session on January 18th, 2018, the Board discussed what qualifications were the most important to them and they also evaluated the qualifications of the 22 applicants. Tonight, in open meeting, the Board will select candidates that they would like to interview.
Um, the Board, um, is really excited and honored to have received so many applications from interested community members. And I want to thank everyone who applied for being interested in helping to improve educational outcomes for students of Tacoma. The number of applicants shows a broad interest in the community and the support that we have for the Tacoma Public Schools. So at this time, I'd like to ask for a motion to select candidates for interview.
Pardon me. Based upon the discussions that we had in executive session about the candidates whose qualifications best match the needs of the district, I move that the Board select the following applications for interviews. Rosie Ayala, Enrique Leon, Arthur Banks, Tracy Kelly, Stuart Young, and Solja Warnick.
It's been moved. Is there a second?
Second.
Any, so all those in favor of adopting the motion?
Oh, I'd like to make a comment before-
It's a non-debatable motion under Roberts rules. Sorry.
It is?
It, it would be up to you, President Cobb, if you want to allow discussion or not. I will just caution that we don't want to breach the privilege in executive session of discussing the qualifications of candidates, but if there is any, if you want to open it for discussion, you may, or you may move straight to vote.
Um, with that, um, caution in mind, I think that if a board member, um, wants to make a comment, that is fine. But I don't think we should get into back and forth discussion. So, is there any comment?
So I, I, I wanna make some comments, but I don't want to make them about anyone specifically. Um, I, I think, feel that there are people not on that list that should be on that list, that, uh, represent Tacoma, that I have intersected with over the years, that are active in schools, that know what's happening. And, um, also time is a essence for me, that people have the time to do it. So I just wanted to put that out there, that, um, not everyone that I want is on that list.
Would you like to make a motion for, to amend the motion?
So if I do that, it would be too many, I, I would have several, uh, people and I just feel like it would be unwieldy, uh, possibly to make that motion. But I just wanted to, you know, as, um, Director Cobb said, there's some really good people on that list. Most of them are very good and I could work with most of the people on that list. So it's, uh, unfortunate that we don't get to choose more than one.
If I might make a comment.
Director Yell?
We spent a great deal of time selecting these candidates. I don't think it would be fair to add another list and that we have not had adequate discussion about adding. Uh, and that we should stay with the original list that we developed according to what we felt our needs were. And I agree, there are many qualified. It was a very, um, robust discussion as we went through talking and discussing what we felt that best, was our best fit for the needs of our kids. So I would oppose a- another motion to add additional names.
Any further comment? Director Heinz?
Yeah, I, I'd just like to express my appreciation. Twenty-two applicants, um, given the time that it takes to serve on the board and, and the, the background, the diverse qualifications and background that each candidate brought. And, um, and we're gonna wind up, um, having public interviews with 25% of the candidates. So I think that, um, you know, the, the application process, it's that initial screening, it's a multi-layer process. You have a process to vet out people. These are never easy decisions. There's always well-qualified people that I'm sure could do, uh, great things on the board that just don't make it from layer to layer of the screening process. And I think that i- if we interview more than six, it begins, it just makes the process more cumbersome. I don't know that it, that it simplifies the process. I think it makes it more challenging. Um, and, and I think that the list that's been proposed, um, meets the qualifications that I heard were important to people when we had discussion. So I would encourage us to take action, uh, on the motion that's currently before us.
All those in favor of adopting the motion as introduced signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion is approved.
So to confirm then, the Board has identified the following candidates who will be contacted for an interview on February 15th, 2018. Rosie Ayala, Enrique Leon, um, oh, Tracy Kelly, Stuart Young, Solja Warnick, Warnick, and, uh, Arthur Banks. Is that correct?
That's correct. Thank you.
And we will notify the selected candidates. The interviews will be conducted in an open session that will be recorded but not televised. The Board will then meet in executive session on February 16th, 2018 to evaluate the qualifications of the candidates for appointment. The Board will vote on appointment at the February 2016, or 22nd, 2018 meeting, meeting. And the new board member will be sworn in at the March 8th, 2018 meeting.
Moving on to item number 14, reports to the Board. There is none tonight. Item 15, Board Comments or Reports. Starting with Director Heinz?
Uh, nothing this evening.
Director Winskill?
I just want to comment that I did go to the Next Moves, uh, event a few weeks ago and it was, uh, you know, very, it was full. It was a day where the students didn't have to be in school, so they could be there. And, um, enthusiastic students who had just graduated a couple of years ago, who were talking about how much the program meant to them. So it was nice to see our student there today.
Director Yell?
I'll just second what Director Winskill said about Next Moves. It was fun to talk to the kids and the ones that were going to be going to the program and were excited and so on. Uh, last week I, uh, had the opportunity to testify in front of the House Ways and Means and, uh, request that they give, uh, locally-elected boards the option to set levies based upon either the $1.50 or the $2,500 per student based upon our assessments of our students' needs in our communities. And that's our message and that's what we're asking them to do. And it, uh, I had four legislators, some who aren't even from around here, come out and say they understood what we wanted and they thought it was put very succinctly for them. And so we will, we will keep our fingers crossed, move on. More fun, yesterday I had the opportunity to go to both, uh, Whittier and Wainwright and see what they're doing with the IB. And I was excited to find out that my youngest, my next to youngest grandchild is gonna be going to preschool there and they teach four units of IB in preschool. So that IB program goes all the way up through now high school. I've opportunity to see Wainwright with the kids in the classrooms and the quality of instruction and the use of the building. I mean, it's amazing and, uh, Spanish class and that too is working through their IB, beginning of their IB certification. So it, uh, it was a, it was an interesting day. And then Don asked me if I wanted to sit in on the discussion of the IB program and how things are coming about and they're well ahead on their planning. And the one thing that I've always been struck about with IB is IB is a, is a program that serves all of, all the kids that want to be in it. Diversity, high quality of, uh, instruction and you well know that. And, uh, and it's something that I think we as a school district strive to do is to provide that kind of rigor across the board. And as I looked at the kids at, uh, Wainwright and McCarver and at, uh, Whittier, which has become much more diverse in the last few years, at McCarver, at, uh, Giadroni, I think it is, and at Foss, uh, that this is a program that we should be very proud of because you don't have to be picked in a lottery. You don't have to pass a test and yet it offers the same opportunities for highly capable, uh, things for, for all the kids and helps us obtain our equity positions that we are working so hard to do. So, I, and I will, in full transparency and disclosure, indicate that my son isn't, my youngest son is an IB grad of Henry Foss, so I do know a little bit about the program. Anyway, thank you. It was, uh, if you get an opportunity, go over and, any of us on the board get a chance, go over and take a look at Wainwright and see how that building has really adapted to the instruction. It was fun. So it was a fun day. Thank you.
Student Board members?
Uh, yeah, I actually do have a comment. Um, I just wanted to say as a Hispanic student, I agree with what the member of the, um, of the, of the, yeah, community said. Um, I do think it's a good idea having a Hispanic, um, director. Um, diversity is always good, so.
Mm-hmm. Thank you.
My report, my report?
Good. Um, my only report is, um, we have such talented students in all ways. So I just, I, I can't keep up with all of their accomplishments, but I have it fresh in my head that the Lincoln Cheer Squad won a statewide award this, recently. So I just want to acknowledge their accomplishment and honor them for that. I don't, I'm not, not honoring anybody else. I just didn't hear about it in the last week. Facebook is my connection to lots of things happening in the district. So I just wanted, well, there are other connections too, but it's the one that gives me the great, best pictures.
You have to disclose you're a Lincoln Abe.
And I'm a Lincoln Abe, so I always pay attention to the-
I have to do that with Wilson. You have to do that.
But I just wanted to, always, our students are doing such great things. So I just wanted to, uh, acknowledge that accomplishment.
May I add one more? Henry Foss High School won, boys, the 2A league championship and will be the number one seed in the West Central Tournament. And they are the 2A defending state champs. So go hard, go Lincoln, go Foss, and we'll keep our fingers crossed.
That's awesome. And the Lincoln Boys also.
Yeah, and girls. They were at that Bethel game last week.
Yep.
Deputy Superintendent McCarthy, are you going to say something? Add to that list?
Just a quick reminder to build on there that, uh, this is the championship, uh, season for athletics of our winter sports. So we'll have swimmers and divers and we have, uh, basketball players. And then we had a, a young lady that won the, uh, 3A state bowling championship from Wilson as well that we will be bringing to you after the season completes. So you, you have a few weeks of celebration-
Wrestlers, which you forgot, Dr. Wilson.
We have a, a few full weeks of celebrations, uh, and events. Uh, you can check the website for updates. Unfortunately, those schedules are dynamic based on wins and losses. Um, so, uh, please, uh, feel free to, uh, call the, um, Student Life Office if you have any questions about that schedule. Um, but, uh, uh, go T-Town Sports.
Um, and I don't have any further report. So moving on to item 16, announcement of future board meetings. Thursday, February 15th, 2018, from 3:00 to 6:00 PM, the Board will meet to interview candidates for the vacant, um, school director position. Friday, February 16th, 2018, from 3:00 to 4:00 PM, the Board will meet in executive session. Thursday, February 22nd, at 6:00 PM, we'll have our regular business meeting. And Saturday, February 24th, 2018, from 9:00 to noon, the Board will meet for a retreat at the Tacoma Nature Center at 1919 South Tyler Street. Um, item number 17, executive session. There is none tonight. And with that, we're moving on to item 18, adjournment. And with that, this meeting is adjourned. Thank you.